Six P M. The date and time for the proposed meeting this time I called meeting order. My clerk, we have a quorum.
Yes, sir, we have a quorum.
So I didn't find somebody for the pledge. Jason Tony, would you tell that?
The allegiance to the Father, the Lord, the saints of America, to the Republic, to say it's one nation under God.
Let's pray, please. To heaven and to Father, thank you for this time that you've given us this evening. Thank you for the people that have gathered here. Help us keep our minds and our hearts in the position to make this a better place for each and every citizen to reside, to live, and work in this county. It goes unspoken that we have many people here that certainly want that to happen. And we want to help every citizen that we possibly can in the county. I thank my fellow board members for being here and for all the efforts they've been doing. Over us, watch us, and we ask this of your son, do you hear the same?
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next, we'll recognize any elected officials who may be present.
Danny Blanton.
Next, we'll recognize any veterans present.
Chip Worfman, U S Army.
James Brooks, United States.
David Carr, says Navy.
Johnny Hudson, U S Army. Do y'all have one of the county pen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, appreciate your service.
Thank you all for your time and your service. Next, we'll recognize any law enforcement present.
Sheriff Worfman, Lady Diana Sheriff's Office.
Thank you guys again for your service. And lastly, we'll recognize any county department heads present.
Chris Warner.
Logan.
Logan off the seven.
Look at Phil Bay, where the land.
Phil Seven, my name.
Rebecca Johnson, Secretary of State.
And will you please travel for us?
All right, thank you guys. Commissioners, before us first, is a motion to adopt a proposed agenda. We've all been presented the agenda, and if there's no amendments or changes, I seek a motion to approve as presented.
Sub moved.
Second.
In discussion, I hear not all in favor will say aye. If I oppose, after the motion carries, next item, this is special presentation this time. Uh, recognize Alabama First Responders Training Partnership against Cindy, are you gonna do it? Cindy Estrich. And Margot on here.
Margot was not able to be here tonight. Um, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having us on behalf of Albemarle. I am Cindy Estrich. I'm the Community Affairs Manager for Albemarle Kings Mountain. Over the past several months, we have had the opportunity to work with local first responder agencies within the county to provide some really unique training opportunities. And my colleague Braden Beaver is with me tonight, and he has been instrumental in making this happen. So he's gonna actually come up today and tell you a little bit about what we've been doing. Braden, if you want to come on up. Braden is a Crest High School graduate. He also went to Western Carolina University where he earned a degree in mechanical engineering, and we are so fortunate that he chose to come back to Cleveland County and join our team. So I'm gonna hand it over to Braden.
Will you pull that slide up?
Yeah.
So, um, earlier this year, uh, you know, over the past two years, we've been acquiring properties in Kings Mountain for the, the mine expansion, and part of that now is going into the demolition phase of the project. You know, our, our goal is to, you know, throughout this process, be able to get the most out of these, um, you know, structures as possible before they go down. And, um, so last, you know, towards the end of last year, we started talking with the local Kings Mountain Fire Department, as well as the community college on doing controlled burns, and they were very ecstatic to it, you know. They talked a lot on how, you know, the simulations that they're doing over at the, at the community college, or they'll take like a metal conex, you know, frame it up, add wood insulation, all that, and try and stage how a structure will burn. Well, you know, in the words of Richard Carroll, this is throwing those students into the deep end, you know, getting them prepared for what the real world's gonna have ahead of them. And so we've, uh, you know, doing our due diligence, at the start of this year, we went in, we went ahead and got as best as sampling, done on all the properties, uh, we did walkthroughs with the fire departments, uh, that way they could look at the structures, the flooring in them, make sure it's suitable and a safe environment for the students to go into. And, um, we also did GPR, which is ground penetrating radar, to identify if there's any fuel tanks, all the utilities go into the houses, so that way we can clear them, make sure they're safe, uh, ready for a controlled burn. And from there, the fire department and, uh, the community college came in, and they've so far done two structures. We're gearing up next month to do what they call it's FIT training. Basically, for this one, they have three houses fully furnished, uh, they've staged furniture in all of these, and a structure will go in and set these fires in very specific places. So when the students go in, their goal is to figure out, okay, what happened here? What was the cause of this fire? It's a training that you have to have three structures or more to get, and it's very hard for them to find structures that are right next to each other, but with us having these neighborhoods, uh, they have the ability to do this class. I know talking with Richard, his goal was that by the, the end of this year and going into early next year, they want to have around over 200 students trained, uh, with these facilities alongside of the fire department. In that photo on the left, that was from our first burn, the students out there, they were phenomenal, super excited about it, very professional, uh, made sure they were watching each other's backs and listening to their instructors diligently. Alongside that, we've also partnered, uh, with the sheriff's department for doing SWAT training and K nine training. Uh, so they've been using these properties, you know, for the K nine training as if there were, you know, a bomb, or if there was, you know, a wanted person, or even, you know, they'll put fake narcotics in there, send the dog in, see if they can find what they're looking for. And I know, but in the center there, Andrew, he came to, uh, one of our internal meetings a few weeks ago and talked on, they've been using the, um, the, uh, the closed down elementary school a lot for these K nine trainings, and the dogs are starting to get used to it. So he said that they open the door, dog hops out, starts wagging its tail, getting excited, it's time to go train. But, uh, he said the, the most valuable thing out of these houses is that not only the dog hasn't been in it, but they've never been in it. And so going in is as close to as a real world scenario as they can. Uh, they've also done trainings as if there was an armed threat inside, you know, sending in, you know, using fake guns to go in there, you know, make sure they're doing their proper processes, protecting one another, identifying the threat and handling it. And, um, they, they've all been super ecstatic. I know that just, uh, I believe a week or two ago, we did another round of SWAT training at, uh, properties. And like I said, we're gearing up next month to do this next, uh, controlled burn activity. So it's been an awesome opportunity. Uh, I mean, it, it's very, very awesome to see just how excited these instructors and these fire chiefs and police chiefs, um, they are for the opportunity. And they're always going with new ideas for how even if there's a property, say, we can't burn, uh, one, you know, how many trains can they get out of it, whether it's ventilation training or, uh, rescue training, you know, smoking up their goggles and sending them in to try and find a person. It's very exciting, and we're glad that we can provide the service for them to get that real world training. So, yeah.
Very much. Great opportunity for the community. Sandy, would you have to come back up? Uh, we have a proclamation for you, the clerk's gonna read that now.
You wanna bring your whole group up if you can.
Hit us.
Albemarle First Responder Training Appreciation. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, requiring the swift and effective response of our dedicated first responders, such as firefighters, emergency medical services, and law enforcement. And whereas providing realistic and comprehensive training opportunities is crucial to ensure our first responders are prepared to handle a wide range of emergency situations. And whereas Albemarle Mining, operating within Cleveland County, has demonstrated a commitment to public safety, community well-being, and corporate citizenship by opening their properties for use as essential training facilities for our local emergency responders. And whereas since March 2025, over 100 emergency responders across the county have participated in emergency response training in these properties, with more opportunities expected throughout 2025. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners do hereby express their gratitude and appreciation to Albemarle Mining for their support of the community's first responders. Their commitment to community safety is commendable and has a direct and positive impact on the readiness of those who serve on the front lines. Adopted this the eighth day of July, 2025.
Appreciate it, you know, uh, I had no idea what was going on. I'd go down and see the house was boarded up or whatever, and the last meeting we had, community meeting we had, you brought them in, and that's what I come back, we need to recognize y'all, because y'all are doing a great service to the community for the fire service and for law enforcement. And, uh, and talking to the fire service and the law. We have houses time to time, but they're evacuated now, we're about to call good for. Now they said they could go into a house and not have to worry about it. But the house was livable, and they can do some real training in it, so we appreciate it. Appreciate it very much. And tell Margot we hate she couldn't make it.
Thank you. Next, we're, uh, public comment, uh, Matt Mark.
The public comment portion of a board of commissioners meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the board to do so. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from a speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the board of commissioners to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation and are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. All comments from the speaker shall be issue oriented and directly related to a subject that the commissioners have oversight and authority. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed.
All right, thank you. First, we have Danny Blanton.
Danny, just a reminder, the board, not the audience.
I want the people to hear me, uh, but I guess they can hear me. I'm Danny Blanton, Patterson Springs, uh, been living there about 50 years, somewhere thereabouts, 53. I've come about this tax evaluation. Uh, I appealed it both times, and I was told that, uh, mobile home parks does not hurt the value of your property. I have seven within three quarters of a mile, three within 700 feet. Uh, I've owned a trailer park. One of those seven is the one I used to own. Would either one of y'all go buy a $400,000 modular home beside a, a mobile home park? So I appealed it. Two of the, uh, people wasn't here. The very two that really might needed to hear my appeal. But one did ask the question, uh, does a mobile home park hurt the value of the property? That they were told no. And by the records here, uh, they cut it about $3,000 from what had been cut from the first time. I'm not here, it, it says don't get it personal, but it is personal too. But I'm here for the people of Cleveland County. If we got all this new structure coming into this town, they're gonna be tax revenue. We should have brought our rates down to keep them going up. We have a lot of, a lot of property. There's 68% in this county is on the property list. My taxes is, you know, uh, is like, you know, tripled, doubled. People cannot afford it. They're on fixed incomes. So whatever y'all can do to lower this rate, I know it's done been voted on, but there ain't nothing that, that you can't change in this world. I would appreciate it very much, not just for my own sake, but for a lot of people in this county. We're gonna be hurting. People's gonna be hurting worse. The, the raises hadn't went up, but the taxes is going up. I know you're gonna have to have a lot of money to pay the power bill for this new place over here. If that's what caused all of this. And I was told by the appraiser, because mine went up so much, it was because within three miles of my house, there was lots sold for $30,000. And I, I guess my time's up. I guess I'll have to come back next time.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have Deanna Kristen.
Oh, okay. Did they get to see that while I said, okay, okay. Uh, I'm Deanna Kristen. I live at 215 Eagle Cove Drive in Cherryville. The pictures you're about to get, this dog's name is Dobby. Dobby ended up at the shelter after climbing into a Good Samaritan's Dog Kennel, seeking refuge. He's now with Clifford's Army Rescue, receiving the care he, he needs. He's not a unique dog. We see dogs like this all the time. I guess he caught my attention though, because I'm sleep deprived and annoyed because I have two puppies living in my house, puppies that aren't mine, that I'm taking care of because other people aren't. He was full of worms and skin infections, both of which I believe are preventable or treatable with medication, although any exposure I've had to animal abuse and neglect has only been since moved to North Carolina. It isn't prevalent or tolerated by leadership where I come from. We don't know where Dobby came from. Why? Because he's not chipped. You see rescues, shelters, and ethical dog breeders chip their dogs. Backyard breeders do not. This enables irresponsible and unethical people to acquire these dogs and to do with them as they please with no accountability. There's no reason this backyard breeding should be tolerated. I've heard it said that it's about freedom, but I call bull on that. We have licensing fees and fines for many privileges. Why should the care of living sentient beings be any less important? Overpopulation leads to stray dogs, which can be dangerous and costly from bites, traffic hazards, livestock loss, property damage, and emotional trauma. Why are you not protecting us from this? It is your responsibility as our elected officials, until you impose litter fees, unaltered fees, and registration fees on dog owners, people will not be deterred. The conservatism with which I was raised taught me that accountability and responsibility are key principles. These people have no right to use our tax dollars and subject us to the trauma of their irresponsible behavior. Any more than capable people choosing not to work have the right to take advantage of entitlements. Social media is full of people wanting a free puppy instead of paying the $40 it costs to adopt from the shelter. Their supply chain needs to be ended. These unchipped dogs oftentimes end up dead, abused, abandoned, or in the shelter. Are you worried about not getting votes from these people? Do they even vote? They certainly don't exercise civic responsibility in other areas of their lives. My principles value the rule of law, fiscal responsibility, and the life of all creatures, big and small. Do yours? Until you start deterring backyard breeders, you are failing at all three of these. I moved here from a blue state that did not share some of my conservative values. They did, however, protect animals. I recognize that both animal lovers and abusers can cross, cross party lines, and that abuse happens everywhere, but it is an epidemic here. Perhaps I was naive in expecting leadership that would deter these injustices. Animal advocates see crosses, party lines, gender, race, and socioeconomic status, and we vote. It is one of the few things that we actually come together on. I invite you to let the voters know if you're part of the minority on this board who would like to end the suffering or if you just don't care. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Stephen Kristen.
My name is Stephen Kristen. I live at 215 Eagle Cove Drive in Cherryville. Members of the board, thank you very much for hearing me today. I'd just like to reiterate what my wife just said. Take a look at that picture. Look at the suffering in that dog's face. Look at the anguish in that dog's eyes. That's one of God's creatures, just like we are. This sort of behavior, the way a, a person could treat an animal like that is depraved, it's barbaric, and it has no place in civilized society. The person responsible for that is the person who did that to the dog, but you have the authority to change that. You have the authority to implement laws and ordinances that would put some restrictions on breeders and also stop, and also make sure that, uh, the dogs are spayed and neutered. You have an expert on the board who can go into all sorts of things that are, that could be done to save some of these animals. I ask you to use your authority to do that. Thank you very much for hearing me.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Board members, we presented this consent agenda, and your items on the consent agenda in your packet. You had an opportunity to review those. This time, uh, I seek a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
In discussion. I hear not all in favor will say aye. If I oppose. Next item, that's public hearing. We do have one public hearing tonight. This is planning case. Uh, it's actually planning case 25 dash 01. It's requested rezone 208 Bell Road residential to the neighborhood business. This is also a conditional use permit request. This time I'll recognize Chris Park.
Mr. You want me to read the?
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, please.
After the public hearing has been opened, citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. A public hearing is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speaker shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker.
All right, Chris. Good evening, the board.
Planning office has, for your consideration, a request from a property owner to change the zoning of that property from residential to neighborhood business. Um, the applicant is Tyler Falls, uh, representing Jay Houston Properties, who's, who's the property owner. Um, and the property is located at 208 Bell Road. And Bell Road is, um, uh, intersects Oak Grove Road between Shelby and Kings Mountain. It's a one acre parcel, and they're asking to change it from the residential zone district to neighborhood business, conditional use. Um, and that application is supported by a site plan showing you how they want to use the property. The current zoning district residential, uh, allows single family dwellings, manufactured homes, and, uh, multifamily homes on half acre parcels. And then the requested district of neighborhood business, uh, allows residences plus businesses that may support surrounding communities. Typically, it's low impact type businesses, and it's businesses that you may find within neighborhoods. And then this particular application is conditional use, so the applicant is picking out one use in this zoning district, to use it for this property, and then they're gonna show, we have a site plan for your, for, uh, to share with you. And the use that the applicant is proposing is office. Again, the area is, uh, along Bell Road, and Bell Road intersects Oak Grove Road between Shelby and Kings Mountain. And this parcel highlighted in red is on the section of Bell Road that deadens south of Oak Grove Road and happens to be at the end of Bell Road. And the property, or the applicant, actually owns the parcel surrounding the subject parcel. And you can see the uses in this section of Bell Road consist of vacant tracts of land, single family dwellings, and a mobile home park, um, across the road from the property that's owned by the applicant. In your packet and on the board here, we have a site plan that the applicant has submitted, and it shows the property that they're asking to rezone, and it shows an existing building and then a, an addition, um, with dimensions of 24 feet by 30 feet to the south of the existing building. And it would be located about 30 feet from the rear property line. And again, the use for, for this applicant would be administrative for their business, and they're in the business of, uh, um, they're actually a mobile home dealership, but they don't sell mobile homes from the site. This would only serve as the office for administrative purposes for that, for that business. Our, uh, zoning districts surrounding the property are, is all residential. And then you can see when you move towards Oak Grove Road, which is north of the screen, you'll see some different colors for different zoning districts, such as different types of, uh, a variety of business districts. And then our land use plan for this area is what we consider primary growth. Um, and then when you read the description of primary growth in that manual for our land use plan, you will see that it's expected to have more development activity through this area. We shared this with our planning board, um, at their last regular meeting, and their comments were that it fits with the, um, character of this area, that the proposed use is low impact, um, and that the, the zoning district would be consistent with the land use plan, and they recommend approval. And tonight, you've got a, uh, a to do list. You, you should hold a public hearing, consider a land use plan, and then you may approve, approve with any reasonable conditions or deny the application. And I can answer any questions.
Put that, just leave my list up. All right, uh, board, what questions do we have with Chris before we open the public hearing? No questions?
No questions. A comment, I, I wrote down there, and, uh, I'm, I'm happy that we changed the signage we put up and, you know, more permanent sign, and it's, uh, really, really, uh, available for people to see, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right, so this time I'll declare the public hearing open. We are, as Chris stated, we are required to hold one for this. But this time the public hearing is now open, and we had one citizen who desires to speak tonight at the public hearing, and this time I'll recognize Denise Stallings. Hey Denise.
Thank you. I am Denise Stallings, and I live at 1418 Marymont Avenue in Kings Mountain. Chris basically, uh, said everything that I was planning to say too tonight. It is 1.25 acres. Uh, I'm representing my daughter, Jackie Falls and Tyler Falls here tonight. They had to be at a baseball game in Cooperstown and could not be here. So, uh, the office space is primarily used just for seeing clients for rental purposes and for selling mobile homes, because that's what they do. And, uh, they're just going to build on to an existing building. And, um, and they do own everything around that building, in that area. So, uh, I ask you tonight for your approval, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, so that was the only, uh, citizen that desired to speak, so this time we declare the public hearing closed. Chris, if you want to come back forward, in the event, did any board members have any final questions? Board, well, we've held a public hearing, we need, uh, he's already spoke about the land use plan. It's in, it's in accordance with the land use plan, that the, and the, the planning board's also commented on that already. So it's down to us to, uh, uh, debate and then, uh, make a decision to either approve. You got, we can add any conditions if, if they are appropriate, or then are denied and request outright. So with that, what questions, uh, might the board have?
I don't have any questions. Uh, maybe the rest do, but, um, it looks like it fits in fine where they want it to be, and I would make a motion if everybody's ready to approve.
I, I will say that a road down there, and the road seems a little narrow, but I really don't think this is gonna be, uh, a high impact to the, uh, to the neighborhood. I don't think there'll be multiple cars going up and down every day, so I'm, I'm in approval too, but you've already got your motions.
So we do have a motion in seconds, but now you. So we do have a motion in seconds, but now we can discuss, is there any other discussion?
I just think that it, that it fits and that a good job has been done on vetting this, so I see how we should get on.
So with that, we have a motion in the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you all, thank you, Chris, so the motion carries unanimous. We have two final items tonight, these are both board appointments, so the first one is the juror commission and I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, board, we have two board appointments tonight. The first one is for the jury commission. You will need to appoint one person to serve a two-year term set to conclude June 30th, 2027. We have received no new applications and the people on the list have been vetted and recommended for appointments.
So it's a pleasure of the board, for the first one, the juror, jury commission, and you have the one applicant that is also currently serving.
I'll make a motion that we put Melissa Curtis there.
Any discussion? I hear none, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, so we have one more tonight, this is the nursing home advisory committee, Madam Clerk.
Yes, this is exciting, this is a brand new application. This person has completed all of their training, has been in communication with the Ombudsman, has done everything there. So with this new application, they're asking for your consideration to appoint the applicant for their initial one-year term set to conclude June 30th, 2026.
It's a pleasure of the board, we have a nominee of Ashley Manning for this one position. She is a social worker with HRC, DNC main.
I'll make a motion, we put Ashley Manning in that spot.
I'll second it.
Any final discussion? I hear none, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion also carries unanimous. All right, we're down to the last item on the agenda tonight. Tonight we're not going to adjourn, but I am going to seek a motion to recess to reconvene on Thursday, July 10th, 2025 at 8:30, this will be at the LaGrande Center for a Commissioner's Workshop.
So moved.
Sir, second. All in this favor will say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous and we're in recess until Thursday morning at 8:30 at the LaGrande Center.